This is, well, it's four o'clock. So this is the committee of the whole for the Murray City Municipal Council for June 1st, 2021. And I'd like to welcome all members of the council, with the exception of Rosalba Dominguez, who is excused. And let's see, who else? We've got the mayor, GL, and anyway, welcome all. So we have no minutes for approval, and we'll start with discussion item number one, which is presentation from the Boys and Girls Club. And I have listed Amanda Hughes, Leanne Saldivar, and Bob Dunn. Are you guys there?
I don't see them online, Diane. So I don't know if we want to go to Bruce's item and then see if they come.
Okay, all right. Um, so far, we don't see them here. So we will go to discussion item number two, which is a discussion on... Okay, okay. Discussion on vacating municipal utility easement to Security National. And I have Bruce Turner listed. Bruce, are you there?
I am.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you.
Now, there you are, all right. Good to see you.
It's nice to be seen.
Okay, what do you have for us?
Okay, hey Jen, do you have that map?
I do, I'll share it right now.
Yeah, thank you. Over at the Security National Building, we had to reroute some power lines for them to build their new building. And there's an easement that they would like us to vacate. It's the yellow part of that map. Can you guys see that? It's just that little area right there.
Oh, I see, yeah, got it.
Yep, so we've rerouted all the power lines around their buildings. And that's the only easement that remains from the old, from the old easement. And they just like us to vacate it. We have no use for it. Like I say, everything's moved. We don't need it anymore. So I guess it's up to you guys if we want to vacate it or not.
Okay, any questions for Bruce? Why wouldn't, I mean, would there be any reason that we should not vacate it?
No, no, I don't see any reason whatsoever.
Okay, so it's just kind of a formality?
Yep, that's all it is, is formality.
Yeah, so in years past, we've considered this administrative decision and a vacation of an easement like this is, power line easement would have gone just to the mayor. The legislature passed a bill some time ago, a couple of years, several years ago, that defines municipal utility easements. And those easements are required now to come to the city council to be vacated. But otherwise, you would never, before this, you would never have seen this.
Yeah, that's...
So that's what's new about it.
That's what I was trying to figure out, but now I see.
And the answer really is, yeah, this is, this is just something we have to go through.
Okay, any other questions? All right. If you don't have anything else to add, Bruce, I guess we're good. So thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, see ya. Hopefully, next time in person.
Yeah, next time I'll be there in person.
All right, that'd be good. Okay, take care.
Your turn, thanks.
Uh huh. Now we'll go to number three, which is a discussion on an amendment to the general plan's future land use designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential and to amend the zoning map from R18 to R16 and RM15 for 935 West Bullion. Melinda and Jared. Oh, there you two are.
All right, are you seeing the, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, got it now.
There it is.
So this is, in spite of what you can't see at the top, this is actually, like Councilmember Turner just said, this is a, a general plan amendment and zone map amendment at 935 West Bullion Street. Are, can you hear me okay, or do I need that? I'm pretty loud, but not quite that loud. So there are actually two properties here, and we'll get started by talking about those. This is 935 West Bullion Street. You can see the two different, the two different properties that are both in play here, the old communications facility site here and then the empty land to the west of that. This property is currently zoned agriculture in the A1 zone. And the request is to rezone it into two different, uh, two different zones, the R16 and the RM15, two different portions of the property. We'll talk about that in just a moment. But just to set the background so that you can ask the right questions and we can get into it a little bit, it is in the A1 zone currently. And right now, it's in two different future land use designations in the general plan. It's in the Parks and Open Space designation and in the low-density residential designation. You can see that split kind of here. It's in the Parks and Open Space because we made an assumption when we were doing the general plan in 2017 that this was part of the power corridor. The property's not. Had we realized that it wasn't part of the power corridor, preservation corridor, we would have put it in the low-density residential category. So we focused in our, in our reporting and in our presentations about, about this on the low-density residential versus medium-density residential, which is part of the request. The future land use, land use map designation request is to go from that low-density category to medium-density residential. I'm sorry, yeah, that's all one screen, right? So the, uh, this is a, a project that went through the planning commission twice. Just to give a little bit of background so you understand what happened. The, uh, the first request went to the planning commission for zone change and for general land use, future land use map designation change. And the applicant withdrew, and we can talk about that a little bit more as we, as we go through it. But the applicant wound up withdrawing the applications and reapplying in order to limit his density. Part of the concern was that, um, once that designation was changed and if the zone map amendment were granted to RM15, then he would be able to do much more than he was proposing. So he came back with a different application that you're gonna see tonight to, to limit that density by way of two different zones, R16 and RM15, instead of all of the property going to RM15. That was partly an outgrowth of the, the comments that we received. We did receive a whole lot of comments from the public, from the neighborhood down in that area during that presentation, during that review. And that's in part because he had a neighborhood meeting. The applicant, Hamlet Development, held a neighborhood meeting where he showed everyone kind of what he wanted to do and why he wanted the zoning that he wanted. And as a result of that, a lot of comments were, well, we'd be okay with something less than the potential, but the potential is just too scary, too many, too many possible units. And this was the, uh, the plan that he, he made a modification to his original plan based on those comments and then came back and said, well, this is what I would do. And the planning commission and the public comments that came out that night and the ones that he had received leading up to the, uh, to the applications led him to believe that if he came back with a different, a different amendment, a different request to rezone the front part of the property to R16 to allow something like this and the back part of the property to RM15 to allow townhomes like this, that that would be more palatable, that would be more acceptable, and, and that would limit him. He was willing to do this and, and our zoning at RM15 would let him do much more. So with that said, we can come back to that as we need to. But the current application is for the zone map amendment to R16 for the front, 3.36 acres of the property, and RM15 for the back, 4.64 acres of the property. There are two properties there. So we'd, as a result of zone change, if it were granted, we would actually make this lot line adjustment that you see here and then rezone accordingly. So the descriptions are all in place for these two pieces of property to exist like this instead of east and west as they exist currently. So it is possible to do this this way, in the two zones. And that would limit his overall density in the project, or any project really, to about nine units per acre as opposed to the overall 12 that an RM15 on all of the property would allow. This is, uh, this is, his purpose is kind of twofold in doing this. These lots at the front are single-family, and so it kind of keeps the rhythm of single-family on the street that's more visible, on Bullion Street. And then it lowers that density where it's most impactful here visually and then allows him to kind of still cluster these, um, townhomes in the back, keeping them off of this area here, which is a, a cell tower that you can't build any residential units within 165 feet of, and where he needs some land to create a repository for contaminated fill that's on the site. So I want to quickly go back before we go through the process and look at this aerial photo so we can talk about a couple of the reasons that we as staff and the planning commission ultimately recommended for these changes. And it has to do with development constraints and sort of the natural siting of the property. So you do have this cell tower that's right up here in this corner that you can't build within a certain number of feet of that cell tower. 165 feet, no residences. So you have a radius here where you can't build. And that actually creates a kind of an area where he can do a, a neighborhood park for the property and do a repository for contaminated fill. All of this land is part of, and I think this is in your, in your staff reports, all of this land was part of the Highland Boy Smelter Site. So there's, uh, there are some contaminants there that need to be dealt with. Currently, they're in this hillside and just buried. He would like to do the repository. He's got a, a Department of Environmental Quality sign-off to, to go into the voluntary cleanup system. I'm forgetting the VCP, the program, voluntary cleanup program. He's working with DEQ to get that approved. And they've, um, I believe they've approved him to work in that program, if not the specific plan yet. But he can do a repository here, clean up the site, and make that work. There's a lot of demolition to be done here as well. And these are, these are all things that constrain the use of this site, make it difficult to be developed under the R18 that the general plan already supports. And that's the reason for the request to the, uh, general plan amendment and the request of the zone change to allow some more density. There is kind of a natural buffering on the site here. This is the, as I mentioned before, this is the power corridor. So this is open land that's gonna remain. And this is an extension of that power corridor to the south of the property, 80-something feet to the south. So a couple, and then the Murray City Power Property and...
Jared, real quick, so, so the, you just showed that space there. That's between the R16...
Yeah.
And the RM15, is it?
This, this right here would be between the, uh, the existing development, RM...
Oh, gotcha, thank you.
These are existing homes.
Gotcha.
And then this, this space right here is an easement, a power corridor easement, uh, that runs, and it's owned by UPNL. So that's not going away. So this space right here would be a natural buffer between the new project, which would be townhomes in this area inside the red. There's a, there's a, it doesn't actually border directly on the residential property. There's an easement between them.
Okay. 80, you said?
Kind of, yeah, sort of a natural buffer. So when we, we look at all these things together as, as staff, when Mr. Brodsky approached us about it and said, look, we have kind of natural buffers for the site. We have an environmental hazard on the site that needs to be cleaned up, that costs money. There's a lot of demolition on the site that you don't always see in residential greenfield development. There's usually some demolition, not usually on the order of a building like this and all the satellite antenna. So with those constraints and the natural buffering, we felt like as a staff there was a, a zone change worth supporting that would allow some additional density in here that could be naturally buffered.
Jared?
Existing uses, yeah.
Are we, are, are the developers expecting us to provide any funding for the mitigation of that? No?
Not at this time, no. This is, there's no RDA in this area to provide that kind of funding. There are some, there are some avenues he could pursue, not with us directly.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of, there's a couple of options that, that he could pursue, not through Murray City.
Okay.
There's, there's a brownfield cleanup grant that runs up and down the Wasatch Front that he could look at. It's a low-interest grant. But there's no funding that we would have for him. He hasn't asked us for any.
So it's his responsibility then to, to foot the full bill?
I believe his estimate, when, when we held the public hearing on the 15th, he will go over this information. But I believe the estimate to clean it up is, I think, 1.2 million. And he does already have his voluntary cleanup program approved through the state. So if this does get approved, he, he would be ready to start that program. And it's through the State Department of Environmental Quality. So this would be his fourth time through a cleanup in Murray.
So he's familiar with the process and...
Yeah.
Okay. And where is it? Is, is the hazardous materials all through that property? Or where?
My understanding is that it was moved, when this was built, when this project was developed as the communication facility, it was embedded in this hillside. It's kind of a hole there. And the material was embedded in the hillside. That's been my understanding, although I don't, I wouldn't guarantee that.
Okay, so it needs to be cleaned up, that's for sure.
It would be better through a DEQ-approved program, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't, because we know there's contamination that exists there, we would not issue any type of a land excavation permit without a surety that the contaminated materials would be handled appropriately. So, uh, any future development of this site would have to have some type of DEQ approval of a process to clean it up.
Is that probably why it's been empty, vacant for so long, do you think?
Yeah, we know, we know there's been a number of developers that have looked at the site. And, uh, my understanding is that most have walked away when they've found out about the contamination and knowing the cleanup costs that are involved with that. Or just even, not even the cost, but the expertise and the risk involved with making sure you have all of the proper training in place for cleanup. So it's, um, it's a large endeavor that not every developer is willing to undertake.
Okay, then to just have it all be open space would cost the city a lot of money then?
Well, we don't, we don't own it, so that there's really no...
I know, but for us to buy it and, and make a park out of it?
I think one of the entities that passed on buying it was our power department.
Yeah, our power department looked at purchasing it and, um, for various reasons, didn't end up moving forward with that. That was last year. And, um, yeah, if, regardless of who owns this, whether it were to be the city, private party, a developer, in order to do anything different with a property, they would have to clean that up.
Right, okay.
If I might, during his first, his first, uh, presentation had a park there. And the citizens, there were several citizens, and they were very vocal. They didn't want any more parks. Murray has enough parks. We don't want a park there. So he changed to this next one, yeah. So a park was part of his, I think it was like two, two and a half acres of it was gonna be a park, and people didn't want it.
So it was more clustered. It was all townhomes, and so all the units were to the, to the west and south. And the park was out along the road. That was, that was roundly rejected.
Yeah, and it's a little confusing, too, to be before the council on a general plan amendment and a zone map discussing a project.
Right.
Because normally, we, we don't. We talk about uses of the property. Because there was the public meeting or the neighborhood meeting that was held, that really kind of integrated the conversation that it was, it was too confusing with all of the public comments that were coming in and the questions to not address the project as well. And so this is, this is something, normally, we're, we're not having a dialogue about number of units, um, in particular to a project. But, but once that, that neighborhood meeting was held, it really, it, it really became necessary, I think, to have the discussion about more of the specifics that Mr. Brodsky and Hamlet Development was looking at. Otherwise, it just was too confusing to try and help the public understand some of the questions and the realities of what was possible there and what he was proposing. So, yeah, the, the initial proposal came in for 92 townhomes. And a portion of that would have been two and a half acres of, uh, a park that he was proposing be open to the public. And that would be where the repository for the contaminated soil would be located. And the neighborhood, as Councilmember Cox indicated, the neighborhood did not want another park over there. They felt like they had adequate parks. So, so then Mr. Brodsky came back and, um, you know, put forth another concept that is really what generated the application that's here today.
Right.
Interesting. Yeah, that was gonna be my next question. Why are we discussing that part of it?
Yeah.
Because we don't usually.
Yeah, and, and we, we really honestly kind of, for this reason, discourage neighborhood meetings because it just, it just gets too entangled with a specific project. And, and then there's expectations that come from, you know, from the people who were part of the process and making public comments of what should be built and constructed. And, and so we really, we really do try and stay away from that. But it became too difficult to kind of separate the two.
And so without talking about the project anymore than, than we sort of had to, like Melinda said, when you look at the zoning that's proposed, it mirrors this kind of project. So although it doesn't, the zoning, if the zoning were changed and approved to be R16 and R1 and RM15...
Yeah, can you go...
Oh, why not?
There we go.
So if the zoning were approved and changed to RM16 and RM15, as he's requested, this is representative of the maximum density you could do, about nine units to the acre between the two different acreages. So you can do the 12 back here and you can, sorry, you can do the 12 on this portion. You can do about seven units to the acre out here, a little less with the public road out. But you wind up with that same, that same kind of density. You may not get this exact configuration if Mr. Brodsky... You still have that same element of, of uncertainty because if he sells the project or something goes wrong or, or whatever. But you're not rezoned to RM12 all over with just the promise that we're gonna do slightly less than we're allowed to do. You're, you're limited to this density per acre overall, about nine units. And again, with that natural buffering that's in place, and with a little bit of proximity to this 700 West as a, as a minor arterial, et cetera, staff felt like this was a good opportunity for us to add some density in an area and get a project done that otherwise folks have walked away from because of the constraints on the site. So it does require that, that land use amendment, that land use map amendment from the general plan, which we don't always like to, we don't always like to see. But we feel like, um, under some of the goals of the general plan, that's, um, that's supportable.
Will you go back to that last one for a second? Thank you. Uh, we're, we're being asked to rezone RM15, but with nine units possibly to the acre, a maximum of 12. Will you explain that? Because a lot of people still think 15, and it's confusing because, if I understand it properly, you have RM15, but then in that property, you have to take out, uh, land for roads, for sidewalks, for curb and gutter and things. So people see RM15 and they think 15 units per acre, when, when in fact, that isn't the case or couldn't be the case.
Not normally, not normally the case. So the two things, two parts of that question, and it's a good, good question, good clarification. The overall density of a project like this, taking all of the acreage considered together with the two different zones combined, is about nine units to the acre, all of it together. This up here, at, at R16 is, is, uh, is a density of about seven units to the acre, or 6,000 square foot lots. All of these represent, in this whole property, there's 6,000 square feet per lot. So it's a little different than the unit per acre density that we normally calculate. And back here, where it's RM15 in his proposal, you get 12 units to the acre. We have these confusing multifamily zones. RM12 or RM15, the base density is 12 units per acre. If you want to get to 15 units per acre as a density, you have to do a whole bunch of things for the density incentive bonus. And they're, they're just, in short, not doable in a normal project and certainly not in a project with the constraints this one has. Not all the space can be used because you have a repository that has to be built, and you have this 165-foot buffer from this tower, which means you're not gonna get to use all the property. So even if you did the density bonus items and, and created affordable housing options that were guaranteed 50 years into the future and extra landscaping, all of them kind of move your, your functional density down, too, because there are logistical problems with providing those density bonuses or getting that density bonus. So you're really at, at 12 units per acre when you're talking about RM15 zone. I've not had a single project that's been processed since I've been here for seven years that made it through the density bonus project. I'm only aware of one, and it was, it wasn't the full density bonus all the way to the extra density. It was one level. And it was a little dubious, to be honest. I'm not sure it really met that intent, but I didn't process it, so I won't say anymore about that. So, um, yeah, you can't really get to RM15. It, it's RM12. I, I don't have any concern about it being 15 units per acre. And even if it were, it's a portion of the property now. It's four acres of it minus this 3.36 that's in the R16. And that's really what Mr. Brodsky was trying to do, was respond to the concerns that we were hearing in the comments that we received and that we read out loud in the hearing and say, I, I'm not trying to do, I don't need to do 90 units. I need to do, I think we ended up at 70-something to fit in this acreage.
With the, have the entire property been zoned to RM15? In theory, he could have done up to 120 units. No more than that. And that would have been with the density bonuses. He only wanted to do the 95, but the neighborhood, again, their comments and concerns in the neighborhood meeting were that was too dense. And so, uh, he's trying to respond to those concerns. And, and that's when the concept for this kind of split in the zoning came to him, Kind of split in the zoning came to him, which in in. Trying to be responsive to that, well, yeah, you still could do this many or or a developer says he's only gonna do this many, but we all know if it gets rezoned. Somebody else buys it, they they wouldn't stick to that. And so that's where he's come forward with this that that. By splitting it this way, the density allowance between the two zones. Really is about seventy five units total, so about fifty five of the townhomes. And then twenty.
Single family lots.
So just one more question. I'm wondering. So staff has determined that infrastructure is fine. There's no no concerns in that regard.
That's a that's a good question. No, there there aren't. We've been through. There's been a traffic impact study done. Found that there's no significant impact to level of service. No real. Requirements as a result of this kind of density being added to the project. Bullion functions at a level of service A and will continue to function at a level of service A. There is some impact to. To different intersections, but nothing that warrants a change to those. To those services, to those. Facilities. So traffic impact study was negative. No problems from that. There was also. We had a sit down meeting with a gentleman from the school district. There were a lot of comments about impacts to the schools. Good meeting. With him, he's the service coordinator for Murray School District. He wasn't concerned about this. He had received the notice, wasn't worried about it. We did talk to him about some other projects going on too. We're planning to meet every month or so with him. He's really interested in all the things going on and that we can get to be beneficial to meet more often with them in in between the the larger meetings that that get conducted. But there were no concerns from the school district about the specific site and its development now.
If I might, I actually talked to the school district about that because. It came out in one of our meetings that Viewmont was full. And I talked to the superintendent and she told me if this were to go forward. What they would do is stop taking and I I'll call and permit students. But I don't know what the real thing is, but they're out of district students. And by the time this project, if it's approved, by the time this project. Comes to fruition and people are actually living there. Viewmont, those people would have cycled through and been in junior high and there'd be there'd be room for any any children that came.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah.
The the gentleman we met with talked about that kind of thing, too. He said it's really a matter of of moving programs and things around if we really needed to, but he didn't see a lot of. Need for that in this area arising from this kind of project and the numbers of students they would expect from it based on their experience. So, yeah, we've worked, we don't. We tried to look into that carefully. We always ask for input from affected entities. So we send out notices of these kind of things to the school district, to all of the public utility providers. And we generally don't see responses from them unless it's really big projects and one like this, although it seems big in the area that it's in. It's it's not large enough to to generate a lot of concern with the school district. Didn't get generated any concerns from our public utility departments from water, sewer, power. There are things that need to be done, but nothing out of the ordinary for development. And traffic was the other big concern. We don't have any indication from the traffic impact study that was done. More frankly, from the master transportation plan that's on its way. Your direction that this should be a concern.
Regarding the traffic study, there's been some criticism of doing any traffic study during a pandemic is obviously. And you can't wait, you know, two, three years to to do the traffic study, obviously, but could you talk a little bit about what that looks like, how long they're there? And then you mentioned it. It's an A and it will continue to be an A. Could you talk a little bit more about what that means?
Yeah, so that's a great question and 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 a good point. There's been a lot of concern, not just with this project, with other projects, traffic studies during COVID nineteen. You're doing traffic counts when it's the the least amount of people driving. In the last twenty years or whatever. We didn't. They did do numbers. They did traffic counts. And saw differences. So they averaged those and take numbers from the two nineteen. We'd have projects from the area in twenty nineteen. Not specifically on on Bullion, but for a couple of years past, we had traffic on some Bullion from projects that were done Murray Cove. And Walden, I forget the name of the project on Walden Glen. There were other traffic studies that had numbers from twenty nineteen, pre-COVID numbers that they were able to use and work into the model system. So it's not just looking at numbers from nowadays when there are fewer cars and the schools aren't as open or haven't been as open. They looked at other numbers too. Level of service. Is is a measurement of how long you wait at an intersection, how well an intersection is functioning. So I'm gonna forget, but the. Let's just look at a couple of numbers here real quickly. Ninety townhome units. This was, again, this was all done. The the level of service, sorry. The traffic impact study was not redone when you reduced the number of units. That seemed redundant, so they it was done with ninety units. On the original plan. Anticipated to project six hundred forty weekday trips, forty four trips on the morning peak hour, fifty four at the morning at the peak evening hour. Bullion Street is carrying, is it twelve hundred? I want to see, not looking at the master transportation plan around, about twelve hundred cars a day. The facility is designed to handle upwards of five thousand a day. So we're not going to generate anything that's gonna. That's gonna cripple Bullion or or slow down intersections to the point where they're not functioning. There's always gonna be traffic during peaks, during evening and and morning peaks, and with the schools in the area, you're gonna see that. But nothing that would. Nothing that would say that would let us deny a project based on that. Of course, this is a zone change, but. Regardless, we don't see an impact for the traffic that's significant.
So essentially, the traffic impact analysis is. All of those consultants have developed a way to compensate for the differences in traffic patterns because of the pandemic and. They did use some methodology in this study to either project those or they looked at past studies and projected growth. But and there has there has been some criticism from the public about. The traffic impact study, but but that's why any those studies are reviewed. By the city's engineer. So there's oversight to that and. As Jared mentioned, the really the outcome of this traffic impact study. The science does not suggest at all that there would be any impact to the level of service. It's a level of service A. Before the project, it would be a level of service A after the project and that level of service A. Any of those actually, they're convenience factor. So a level of service A is the most convenient. There's minimal wait times, if any, and. As you get on to B, C, D, E and F, is the wait times increase. So it's not any function of safety either. It's just really convenience factor rating. That doesn't change with. The proposed density of the ninety or the seventy five.
I'll ask one more question. Someone else is leaning forward. So my other question is just about the RM fifteen specifically as a zone. What are the height restrictions on development that can happen in that area?
That's a good question. It's forty feet in the RM fifteen zone.
All right, and that's how many floors?
Well, that's the same. It doesn't tell you you can't have multiple floors. It just says forty feet. You could do. You could do three stories easily in the RM fifteen. I'm not on the right slide here, but.
That's okay.
I do have one. Do have a slide about that. There you go. Oh, I'm on the wrong. Sorry. Well, none of those are the right slide. I never have one. Maybe I don't have one on this one. I don't have one on Jefferson. But yeah, forty feet is the the overall height that's allowed in the RM fifteen zone. We do allow up to three stories, yeah.
Thank you.
What you were gonna say, you thought there was what? Jefferson has?
Jeff, we have a table in Jefferson on the Jefferson Street. Rezone that has those that has been laid out together.
Okay, maybe we can see those next time. Okay.
So. I think this may have been a little bit of the direction that Councilmember Martinez was going in, but. We did want to just discuss. So the applications that that you have before you are to discuss or I mean, to decide. About the general plan amendment and the zone map only, even though we have been discussing a project. That's not anything that would be included in this approval. And so if this were to be approved. Next. Council meeting, June fifteenth at the public hearing. Then Mr. Brodsky would need to come back to planning divisions, submit a project application that then would go through its. Regular process with the planning commission. And one of. One of the things that gives us as staff a level of confidence that we can mitigate some of these concerns is. Because that does have to go through a very specific process for the planning commission where we can discuss. Impacts to neighboring. Existing residential. You know, we've we've talked in other meetings about buffering and those types of items can be addressed. When the if the zone changes approved and when that project comes through. So that's the slide that's just kind of saying. You know, we're discussing the general plan amendment, the zone map amendment only. Project will come later, but that goes through its own public process as well.
Can I ask one more question?
No, that's that's.
So previously, a company owned this property with the satellites and. It was functioning when the last general plan was made. Is that accurate? Okay, so without anticipating that, you know, that would go away. There's some questions of what is a typical change in zoning, like going from agriculture to residential from. Sort of like larger single homes to multi-family. Like, is there something that's typical? When making a general plan change historically?
You know, I don't know if I would say typical, but. But but the the indicator here is that we had said low density residential. Regardless, even though it was functioning as a. As a satellite facility, as a communications facility, was in this agriculture zone and we tend to to take agricultural zoning in. And in an area where most of it is low density residential already, we would apply that low density residential.
So it's not really a leap from agriculture to. Because that was already in the plans that this would be low density. It's. And the front part, the R one six, that's still, is that low density? That's still low density?
That's a category that corresponds to low density residential.
Right, okay. I live in an R one six, but I had fifteen kids in my front yard this morning, so it didn't feel. It didn't feel identity today, but yes, it is the density and then the area behind it. So that's the only real. Like shift to the general plan, looking forward is the RM fifteen.
Yeah, the change to the medium density residential land use category to allow that RM fifteen, that's the real the real shift. Going from agriculture is isn't anticipated change.
But that's already part of the plan.
Going on in Murray right now.
Not anymore. Okay, thank you.
Well, and two two things to to just kind of tack on to that based on some of the comments that we. Have seen from the public. One, I think it's important to distinguish that. Townhomes are not high density. It may feel that way, but we have very distinct categories of low density, medium density and high density and townhomes are not high density. They're.
Medium.
Medium density. So the other thing is there's been kind of a lot a lot of fodder about. Jumping zoning designations and that's just simply not how land use planning. Works. You don't have to go from R one six to R one eight to RM ten to whatever to you just change a zone. So when folks are saying like, oh, that's it, that's a huge jump, you're jumping so many levels. That's not really. Anything that we look at because it's just a change in use. And we look at the uses and not. I mean, it's it's not like a certification process where you would have to get. A certain achievement in order to go on and pass a test and get another one. It just. It just is a change.
That's fair.
And also. Regardless of what the change. That was proposed, if somebody comes in, submits an application and pays. Their application fee, we process. The application regardless. We may, I mean, we do go through the process of determining whether or not the general plan. Can support it if it makes sense, if we feel like we can. Counterbalance some of the impacts that may be there with a specific zone use. But we process applications because they're submitted and the applicant. Takes or pays for the application to be processed. So. There's also been, you know, residents in the area that have. Questioned why we're even bringing this to the city council and that's just simply because. Somebody came in and filed an application and paid their fees and that's what we do. That's part of our job is to process the applications that come to us.
And if I if I might, that leads me to one other point that I did want to make and then we can take into their questions that you have. Another concern that was raised was that. We would, this would set a kind of a dangerous precedent for A one zoning anywhere in the city. So anywhere there's A one zoning now, people are gonna be able to come in and say. Well, you've already set this precedent that you'll you'll rezone to to RM fifteen and that's just. Not to sound good, but that's not how precedent works. This is this is an individual situation. There are buffers here that don't exist. We didn't contemplate anyone wanting to do. More density on this project in order to overcome. Site constraints. So those those coincidences aren't gonna happen on every single piece of property in the city. And certainly not on every A one piece of property in the city. So and we wouldn't support. A change like this in every situation as staff, but where we see an opportunity like this to add some of that density. And solve a problem that the city has, not just that density so a developer can get more units. But but solve an environmental problem that exists, get the property developed and cleaned up in these vacant buildings. Now it's vacant. When it was in operation. It wasn't even on our on our radar, no pun intended, since it's a radar facility. But it wasn't on our radar until that was vacant and people started to come in and look at it and question what they could and couldn't do. And as developers failed in looking at it for their. For their potential projects and Mr. Brodsky came in and said, you know, I would do some townhomes on that and use that density to clean the property up and. Cluster it and do a repository. And that made some sense. We felt like we could get behind that as staff. And and take a chance on it. So it doesn't represent the normal. Kind of of zoning, rezoning that we would want to support, but it does represent a good opportunity.
Yeah, and it's also important for the council to know that. And this is more so for the planning commission, but a lot of what comes before the planning commission. There's really no discretion as to whether or not they approve it. It's just under what conditions it gets approved. In this case, the planning commission is a recommending body. The council is the land use authority on zone map amendments and the general plan amendments. But it's truly a discretionary decision, meaning there's there's. Nothing that forces your hand to approve this if if it's not something that. You feel like can be worked through and that that you can support. When we're talking about conditional use permits, we're looking at whether or not the project meets code. And if it meets code, we have to approve it. This is a discretionary decision for the council to determine. A change to the the general plan amendment and that. That's, I think, a part of. The public process that. Realizes, again, that there should be some deference given to the general plan and the effort that's been put through that in the past and. That. It may not be the right time or the right location. If the council doesn't feel that way, but it may also be the right time and the right location if you feel like. This is something that would benefit. The particular set of circumstances that we as we've discussed today. So with that, I mean, we'd love to talk about any more questions you would have, but the planning commission did. Hear this on May sixth and. We mailed out a hundred and forty five notices. So with a project or a project site this large, it's a five hundred foot radius. We received forty seven public comments that the planning commissioners all reviewed and considered. And it was a very difficult decision for them to make because they see values on both sides. But essentially, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation to use the council in a split vote, four to three to support the. General plan amendment and the zone map amendment. And then. Here's to go into a little bit more detail about the general plan and how. We as staff felt that this could be a supported change. I'll let Jared go into the findings that that we. Want to present to you.
Okay, Jared, we're we're we need to continue on, but let me see if there are any other questions from the council. To make sure that. Okay.
Thank you all.
So I think we're good. Yes, thank you so much. All right. Okay, so now. We are at the discussion on zone map amendment from R one eight. Low density, single family to R one six. Medium density, single family for the properties at six five five six, six five six two, six five six six. Jefferson Street. You two are up again.
Fantastic. Thank you. So this is. This is a company called Land Forge has made this application for zone change. This zone change. Application is for. The properties you. Thanks, I appreciate it. The properties you just gave the addresses for, they're on Jefferson Street, on the west side of Jefferson Street here, stretching to the tracks line. You can see them highlighted there in blue. They are in the R one eight zone currently. And the the requested amendment is to R one six. The general plan calls this area out as low density residential and as we discussed on the last item. R one six is one of the zones that corresponds to low density residential. As well as R one eight. So there's no zone, there's no general plan map amendment as a part of this. It's just the zone map amendment. The property, as we said, has been. Is in that low density residential category. R one six fits into that category as well. And again, this is just from the general plan about. Low density residential, the kind of development it supports or should support. And the corresponding zones, and you can see R one six is is one of those. The the other the other important factor on this particular zone map amendment request. Is the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan that was just adopted. So in that Fashion Place West plan, so you can see the station area. Here is item three, sub area. They created these sub areas for that Fashion Place West plan because it was such a distinct. It's a different track station than our other track stations. And it has a different kind of a surrounding area, some industrial area here right around the station itself, and then these large areas of established, single family residential. Zoning and development. That's the subcategory one, sub area one. And this property falls in sub area one. And without. They're this very established residential sub area without being too. Not to put too fine a point on it, but basically the sub area one tells you that. While you should entertain some infill. Density at slightly higher densities, nothing too drastic is appropriate because these areas are largely built out. And they're very well established to single family neighborhoods. So anything that we do. If this were a request to do RM twenty five zoning or something, we would be saying, no, those those densities are inappropriate, but R one six from R one eight. You're you're talking about four additional units perhaps in a project. So we feel like that's appropriate. It's the kind of. It's the kind of density change that we would want to see or that we'd support based on that Fashion Place West Small Area Plan. And then the other thing that sub area one is gonna tell us and let us do as a planning commission. If it's approved for a zone change is really look at the context. Around the the plan that goes into place, the subdivision or the the housing development that comes in. On the basis of a different zone. How does it fit in with the context? Is it sensitive to that? Is it is it gonna mesh with the fabric of that area? Based on that zone change. And we feel like with an R one six, yeah, we we can accomplish that. If we go too high, we wouldn't be able to do that. Land Forge. Came in with that same kind of discussion and wanted to be very context sensitive and settled on the R one six as the density that they really needed to do the kind of project they would want to do. We're supportive of that as a as a staff for a bunch of reasons, but. In this table, this is the one we were talking about before that we didn't have for for your presentation on Bullion. We'll have it for the fifteenth. The R one eight, for example. the uses that are allowed residentially in the R16 and the R18 are virtually the same. Single family, single family detached dwellings at certain densities and lot sizes. You can do PUDs that let you change those lot sizes or cluster homes, et cetera, even attach homes in a PUD. But the lot size is what really governs kind of the underlying density, 8,000 square feet per unit or lot in the R18, 6,000 in the R16. So not a huge distinction, not a huge difference. Heights are a little, are a little more lenient in the R18 than they are in the R16, 30 feet in the R16. Front yard setbacks in R16, you get a little bit of a break. But again, in a PUD, which is the likely outcome of any kind of zone change like this, really can vary those things based on the site design anyway. So one thing also to point out is that in the in the, in the zones, there's no real parking breaks in these zones. We've talked a lot lately about parking and density when we're talking about mixed uses. And so I wanted to make sure I made this point. This is not a mixed use. This is an R16. So this is just residential development. You park your residences at dwellings, you park it to two spaces per unit, period. In the, in the residential zones. The planning commission held their hearing on the 15th of April. There were 80 notices sent out for 400 feet. We did receive four comments. One of those was positive, I believe, and a couple of kind of questioning the zone, the zone change and the density that would come with it. The planning commission ultimately forwarded a recommendation to you to approve on a six oh vote. They were supportive of the item. And staff, again, we would reiterate our support for this change. We did make some findings in the general plan. The general plan does provide for that flexibility. The zone change makes sense in that area. It's not overly, it's not overly dense for that area to fit in. Especially when you're considering the Fashion Place West small area plan. We do feel like it fits in well with that. It's not overreaching the proposed zone map amendment supported by that general plan and the future land use map as well. And we are supportive of it. This, again, in terms of process, this is just for the zone change. It's not the application for the subdivision of the housing development that would go to the planning commission if the planning, if the zone change were approved by the council. Any, any questions for staff?
I've been over there several times and looked at this. Help me feel good about Jefferson Street because there are no sidewalks. There are no room for sidewalks. Unless you take half the lawn that the people already have that are established there.
Yeah.
And I know it's only four, four more units. But it makes, it makes me nervous not to be able to have not just children, but people. Someplace they can walk other than right on that narrow street when we continue to increase the density.
That's a great point. It, it, it's concerning to me too. And it was, it was a concern that the, that the staff and our consultants and the planning commission and everybody had during the, during the Fashion Place West area, small area plan. Sidewalks are needed in this area very badly. So although that will be, that will be a challenge to provide, that's one of the goals of that Fashion Place West small area plan too, is to find a way to implement sidewalks. If we have to do the curb adjacent in some way or on one side of the street only, or what that plan will be, we, we don't know. The first steps toward it would be taken with a subdivision that might come, whether this was rezoned or not. If it stays R18 and gets rezoned, or sorry, if it stays R18 and, and gets subdivided under that hospice, we would still look at sidewalks. We're not going to, we're not going to promote a subdivision here that doesn't provide sidewalks. Now, that's only sidewalks in front of this little bit of, little bit of frontage that they have. But we need to come up with an, an area plan for sidewalks. It's one of the first things that we need to cross off our list from that Fashion Place West area plan. We don't have it yet, but this would be the first step toward that, to providing sidewalks throughout that area that have been neglected for a lot of years. It won't be easy.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But there again, there's driving down that road. There's no room for sidewalks.
Right. Not, not current. I mean, there's, there's right away for it. We could, we could get right away for it, but we haven't come up with a plan for what Jefferson ought to be in terms of width overall. We'll have to work with Public Works to do that. In terms of the subdivision, you're right, it's maybe four additional units, but I would argue that like right now, not wanting to put extra people out on Jefferson because there aren't sidewalks currently. The, the R18 subdivision, we couldn't put that off whether they were asking, if they weren't asking for the zone change, we couldn't put off the subdivision because of it. And the four additional units, I, it's a question we need to answer and it's bigger than the four units or not.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Now we are at the Power Department Quarterly Report. UAMP's and IPA report. Blaine Hackey, welcome in person. This is so nice.
It's great to be here. I had the option to zoom, but I opted to see your faces. So thank you for having us.
So glad you chose that option.
It's been a while, hasn't it?
Yes, long.
Diane, do I have my full 15 minutes or are we tight?
No, we're good.
Okay.
You have the full time.
All right. I'm going to combine my comments with the UAMP's board report, the IPA board, and then just a system update of how we're doing with the Power Department, looking into our summer load a little bit. You know, today's June 1st. We're expecting 100 degree temperatures by the end of the week, I think, or close to it. And so we're going to be scrambling a little bit for power right off the bat, but I'll go into that with a little more detail in just a second. So I thought I'd talk about the UAMP's board. As you know, UAMP's is an organization with about 40 other municipal cities. We're one of the 40. A lot of the comments in the, or a lot of the, I guess, discussion in the UAMP's group is still about the small nuclear project that a lot of the UAMP's members are part of. And as you remember, we opted not to participate in that anymore last October. Concerning that small nuclear project, I know very little about what's happening there. Once the meeting gets going on the UAMP's monthly meeting, they excuse those members that aren't participants in that. And so I don't know a lot because of closed door discussion, what's happening there. The program is, the project is pursued, they're still pursuing the project as UAMP's group. I believe there's 25 or 26 cities still involved. They're still concerned about subscription, making that project worthwhile and big enough to make it happen. But I really don't know much about the project, just the fact that it's still moving. I do know a little bit about the Navajo project. As you remember, we voted to participate in the large scale solar project down in the Navajo reservation area. We are five megawatts of the 66 megawatt project that is being built as we speak. It's not going to be operational until 2022, spring of 2022. So we still have another year. The five megawatts will help us with our renewable portfolio, percentages of clean energy, you might say. And so I feel good about our participation there. A lot of the UAMP's members are still pursuing other large scale solar projects. And so we do have the opportunity at some point in time, immediately or in the short or long term duration to buy into or participate in more solar. And there's even a few geothermal projects coming down the pike. It seems like there's a lot of developers that are approaching UAMP's on different power projects. And it's all clean energy projects. Very few other energy projects are being pursued for obvious reasons. Next up, the Light of Navajo project that we participated in last spring, two springs ago, I guess it was. We spent, sent a crew down to the Navajo reservation, helped them with the building of their distribution line. It wasn't held last year because of the COVID situation, but we have decided that we wanted to send a crew there next time they do it. And so they have had some interest summits, I guess you could say. And we have opted to send a crew next May. We've already signed up for a spot. May 8th, I think, is the week of May 8th, we are going to send a crew down of 2022 next year. And so we will participate in that. We're excited to do that. Our crews came back all fired up. I know Mayor Kemp actually had an onsite visit with Bruce Turner. And our crews came back and said, let's do it again. And so we're going to do that again next May. That was already in the budget that the council has looked at as contributed services or something. I can't remember what the heading was, but that'll be a, I think was on a $30,000 item that we will eat. I don't know what the word would be, but so we're going to do that. Donate. Thank you. Donate. Next up is today, just today, you might have received the itinerary for the summer conference from UAMP's. If you didn't receive it, Jennifer Kennedy now has it. And she will distribute that to you. The UAMP's organization has our summer conference this year in Squaw Valley. It's on August 15th through the 18th. You might ask why Squaw Valley, which is the Lake Tahoe area. It's because it is a, Squaw Valley is located in the Truckee Donner Public Utility District. Truckee Donner is a member of UAMP's. In fact, we have a deal, Murray has a deal with Truckee Donner about some of our landfill methane produced energy that we provide for Truckee Donner. So that's why we're going to that area. Usually they like to hold the UAMP's meetings in areas that are UAMP's members areas. Murray, not Murray, but Logan, Midway, Truckee Donner area, and then Jackson Hole, all are in UAMP's members. So Jennifer will give you that information. Don't need to act on it right away, but beware that that's coming down the pike. One more item on another coal-fired plant the UAMP's has participants in. We have a slight ownership in the San Juan Coal Plant. It's down in the Four Corners area. This coal plant is going to be demolished or walked away from in, in 2022 as well, next spring. It's because of the Californian interest in that project. There's many Californian members that own and are participants in the San Juan Coal Plant, and they can't take coal-fired energy into California because of Sacramento legislative mandates. And the result of that is that no one wants that coal plant anymore. Although it has served us well, it's a small portion of Murray's needs, about 2%. I just wanted you to know that that is ongoing, that next year at this point in time, that coal plant will be let go. Now there's a slight little caveat maybe to that is that Farmington, New Mexico, which is the economic driver city in that area, as well as the New Mexico Public Utility District, I think there's, is a district in New Mexico are still trying to get that plant operable, at least in part. They still need the energy. They're going to have to go somewhere to get that energy and there's works, workings and proposals that they will be able to sequester or capture some of the contaminants coming out of the pipe or the exhaust pipes, exhaust stacks, not pipes. And so there's a slight chance that that plant will continue to go past 2022, but Murray and UAMP's are looking at that. If it's economical feasible for us and they can run that clean, then we might still be participants in that project. But for the most part, that's going to be gone. Most of the UAMP's members, the 40 some odd members are at a stagnant or a no growth pattern. Except, and Murray is one of those. We, we're not seeing any growth as far as energy load sales. We're kind of okay with that. We're still making heads meet. We're still making progress. Our growth is about 1% or less every year. And we're in the same boat with Logan and Bountiful and some of the other bigger cities, but Heber City, Lehigh and St. George are seeing double digit growth. So UAMP's as a group is seeing one to 2% growth, but those three cities I mentioned are seeing huge growth. Just wanted you to know that we are probably more of the norm in this areas, that we're not seeing a lot of growth. And I think a lot of that's because of the conservation people are doing. We, we, we see that from a lot of the other cities is that the status quo is the way it's going. And, but those three cities, Lehigh in particular and Heber. I can't imagine Murray going 15% growth every year. It means you have to build a substation every four or five years and that's, that's an amazing amount of work. On a national level, this is my last comment about UAMP's. I'll move on to IPP. On a national level, we're seeing a lot of congressional proposals coming down through the Biden administration. And I want you to be aware of a few that are going to be very interesting to watch. One is called the Clean Future Act. There's been a proposal by, I think it's Senator Pallone, a Democrat from New Jersey. He is trying to get some national mandates that we have an emission target of zero emissions by 2035. Means anything that we have that's dirty right now, we'll have to get rid of that or make some type of modifications. And that'll, according to his proposal, that would address every sector of the economy. It would require us to have yearly clean energy procurements. And so we'd have zero emissions by 2035. That's not very far away. When you consider we have about 40, about 40% of our resource mix is now coal. And that would have to be dealt with. There are other legislation, legislative issues coming down. A Smith from Minnesota is pushing for a zero emission by 2050. Same type of proposal, but 15 years more grace to us. And of course, usually there's a carbon tax that's proposed, a national carbon tax. What a carbon tax is, is if a utility uses any a resource that's coal or somewhat dirty, then they will be mandated or set a, a tax or in the case of California, they do have a carbon taxed right now. This is a national proposal, but in case of California, any emissions, any energy that comes from a coal-fired plant gets an automatic adder of about $15 a megawatt hour. So that makes a $40 resource a $55 resource. The Californian market is set for that. The rates are a little bit higher than the Utah market. We just don't want to have a carbon tax on us because we'll have to artificially raise our rates 20, 30% just to cover the carbon tax. So we're watching that. Just be aware that there's something on the national level that's maybe coming down to affect us. You know, by the time it gets to the voting floor of the Senate and the House, it's going to be mixed down a little bit, but just beware. All right. Let me talk about IPA. I'm serving as the short chair of the Board of Directors for the IPA, and I've been involved with meetings that I hadn't been involved with a lot in the past as a regular board member. In particular with the Californians, just last Thursday, for example, we did a tour site at Delta. Some of you have been to the Delta site. It's an amazing power plant, one of the cleaner, most efficient plants in the Western United States. We went with a representative from Governor Cox's, Cox's office, his name is Tom Carter. He's the energy advisor for Governor Cox, and he wanted to build the view and to see the Delta plant. It was a great visit. We, we shared a 12 passenger van with him and his advisor. And it was good to hear what Governor Cox's, I guess, perspective is on energy. Governor Cox, of course, comes from Fairview, which is a member of UAMP's, small city in Sappy County, but he's on board with, with us. Governor Cox is on board with a lot of the direction we're going with as far as some of these renewable projects we're into. But that was interesting to, to spend some time with the key advisor to Governor Cox. The plant itself, of course, we're pursuing a change out of fuel from coal to natural gas slash hydrogen mix. That's ongoing. The Californian entities, in particular LA DWP, Los Angeles is pursuing that. They've already bid it or awarded hundreds of millions of dollars of bids to the generator set. This is an interesting situation where this is not only a natural gas plant, which are somewhat easy to build, but the mandate is from Sacramento that they needed something cleaner than natural gas. And the only thing they can go right now is hydrogen. So the proposal is when this plant is operational in 2025 is to do a 30% hydrogen mix and a 70% natural gas mix. Which means that there's going to have to be a hydrogen making facility right on site. It means there's going to have to be some storage of hydrogen. And we've talked about the caverns that are located below the plant. They're going to use the caverns to store hydrogen. But also has to deal with a 60 mile natural gas transmission, gas transmission pipeline built from the Kern River, the main Kern River pipeline down to Southern California to the plant. All kinds of things are happening there. LA's taken the majority of lead on that. And we'll just be the beneficiaries of a new plant once that's built. One thing I think was interesting is that they're worried about the employees retention out there. You know, with the fact that Delta now knows that that plant's going to be shut down as a coal plant in 2025, the worry was that they were going to lose a lot of employees for obvious reasons. They're going to go find something else while, while the grass is green. And so there's retention, a theory, a retention program that they're pursuing down the Delta plant. And really, basically it's, if you'll stay with the plant until 2025, when the coal plant's shut off and the gas plant is, is operational, they'll give you a 5% bonus for every year to stay on. And it's, it's helping a lot of people and we want to keep that expertise, expertise out there. Right now there's 360 full-time employees. The gas plant will be about 120 employees. And there's going to be about 100 expected retirements. So there's going to be about 90, 90 to 100 people that will probably lose their jobs or be laid off come 2025. But the plant, IPP in particular, is trying to make it more palatable. But the plant, IPP in particular, is trying to make it more palatable to these people that have put their careers in. They're giving them all kinds of other benefit, educational benefits and packages. So just be aware, the plant's gonna go to partial employee load, but we're trying to make it as palatable as possible. Okay, let me talk about our summer load real fast. Diane, I'm okay on time, five more minutes. Are we hurt? Okay. We're prepping for the summer load. We're expecting a hundred degrees by this Friday. That bodes well for sales, because we're gonna sell a lot of power this Friday and Saturday. But also, it's concerning to us because if our June load hits hot, fast, what's gonna happen in July and August? About eighty-three percent of our resource is already contracted. It's the top seventeen percent that we go over the peak on, and it, it makes sense to us, business sense, not to buy a hundred percent of our power right now. Because usually when you buy a hundred percent of your power, you can't fit your resource like a glove, because some hours of the day you will have bought too much. And so we are open and susceptible to the power market to some extent. We have our Hunter plant, we have our federal hydro, we have our landfill, and we have our natural gas generation on Forty-Eighth South. We're counting on our natural gas generation big time this, this coming summer. Right now, gas prices are around three dollars, three dollars and twenty cents a decotherm, and that's a really good price, actually. And that means we can generate for about fifty-three to fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour, or about five cents a kilowatt hour. We expect the market, on the spot market, let's say August tenth at four PM in the afternoon when the air conditioners are going, it's gonna be like three hundred dollars or four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars a megawatt hour. We can generate for fifty-five. So as long as we can generate with those three turbines, which is about thirty-three megawatts, we're not gonna be as susceptible or worried about the market. Now, that's not gonna say we're gonna be able to cover our entire load, because we still want to leave part of the top part of our resources, in this case, seventeen percent to the market. We might get bid a couple hours by paying three hundred and four hundred dollars a megawatt hour, but what that does is that we wouldn't have had to pay the three hundred and four hundred dollars at ten in the morning when we didn't need it. Sometimes when you buy a block of power, it's for the entire day, and we don't need it for the entire day, we just need it for four hours. So sometimes it's better to pay a little bit extra for those four hours and then not have to pay other hours of the day. So it's gonna be interesting to see what happens. We've, we've tried to line up some resource options by contract so far, but the pricing is just totally out of whack. I've got a hunch, and the numbers show that if we do the gas turbine generation, we're gonna be okay, and we'll just let the market go where it goes. Natural gas prices down. We've already scheduled about forty thousand decotherms of natural gas, it's just a mix. Let's see, a couple other things, real fast. Cottonwood Hydro, coming out of Little Cottonwood Canyon, has really stunk this year. We're getting about thirty percent of the flow. It's never been much of a water flow for us. We've had some trouble with some bearing temperatures up there. It's not been a good hydro year, and we don't expect it to be a good hydro year. We've peaked. We've peaked with our water flow. We didn't get a whole lot of it, a lot out of it, and that's just gonna happen. We're not gonna be able to rely on that too much in July and August. Okay, outages, last, second to last item. Just today, I got the outage report from May. We had eighteen outages last, last month during the May. You usually have fourteen or fifteen outages a month. This isn't too bad, one every two days will have an outage of some type. Sometimes it's a five or six customers, sometimes it's fifty customers, just depending on the issue. Our largest outage in May was a hundred and sixty-seven people. It was on May twenty-third, a Sunday. They were out for about seventy minutes caused by a squirrel. Caused by a squirrel getting caught up in the transformer fuse, which actually cascaded back to a section fuse. And that was not our only squirrel outage. We had six squirrel-related outages last, last month. That's totally out of the whack from what we usually have. We usually have one or two a summer. I don't know. I don't know why. I don't have the answer for everything. But we have six squirrel-related outages, we had one tree-related outages, but also on Memorial Day weekend, we often have our backyard tree trimmers slash civilian tree corps go out and think they can fall a tree in their yard and not miss power lines. Well, we had two this last weekend where people fell the tree the wrong way into our power lines. So it's, we just do it. Every holiday it happens, and people are trying to save some money by not, by doing the work themselves. So that's kind of interesting. We're financially sound. Brenda could explain that better than I can. We continually turn our margins back to the positive. We're nearing the end of our budget year this past month, this next month in June. We're going to be awarding some bids for some infrastructure and machines and equipment that we've already budgeted for. It's just kind of like the end-of-year frenzy to, to use the money we've already budgeted. It won't be any major amounts, you know, thirty thousand for pickup, that type of stuff. So anyway, that's my report of the two boards, UAMPS and IPA. Once again, we invite you to the Squaw Valley in August, and Jennifer, of course, will have that information for you. So if you have any questions about the load, our employees, we've got a couple young linemen that are just wet behind the ears, that look like they're like twelve years old, but they, they're young, but they are good workers. We've got some good work for us, and so open for questions.
All right, any questions for Blaine? Next time, thirty minutes. You always say you just...
I can keep going.
I know, that's why I said, next time you're getting thirty minutes.
It's September, I think. Okay, Diane, with that.
Thanks, appreciate it, Blaine. Okay, um, let's see, I'm, I'm told that we have the representatives from the Boys and Girls Club, Amanda Hughes, Leanne Saldivar, and Bob Dunn, so we'll hear from you guys. Bob, aren't you going up there?
Yes, I am. I'm on the second floor. I'm on the third floor.
I know, you're supposed to be here at four.
You know what? I apologize. All of our radars from our emails said five to five fifteen, so we, we must have misread that. Sorry about that, Jennifer. You've been trying to be so good to us. Thank you so much. I'm Leanne Saldivar. I'm the current but outgoing president and CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Salt Lake, of which, of course, the Murray Club is our biggest and most and busiest Boys and Girls Club. I, I will say that there's been a lot going on the last year at the Boys and Girls Club, and squirrel-related outages is not one of them. So I'm, I'm pleased about that, because now there's something else I, we can all look forward to. So I did want to, I'll, I'll be brief and then take any questions. I know there may have been some specific questions, and hopefully I can cover some of those in my remarks, but I wanted to give an opportunity to introduce, and thank you for letting us come face-to-face, to introduce our new and incoming CEO. And then, of course, she's surrounded, we've got three generations here of, of Murray Boys and Girls Club leadership, and so we're, we're keeping her surrounded whether she likes it or not. So I just, I really do appreciate the opportunity to come in person. It's just been such a long time, and I think we all zoomed about this time last year, and nobody knew what to expect and what was happening, and it certainly, I can't thank you guys enough for not only the funding every single year over year, but just, just really being behind your Boys and Girls Club. I've said this before, but it is the truth. We operate clubs in five different cities, and this feels, actually, it feels like home. We feel at home here, and we feel that the council and the community really does love and feel like the Boys and Girls Club is an integral and vital and essential part of the, of the community, and we can, we can feel that from, I've had visits from council members in the last year. I got to see the mayor briefly at a masked event. So I have missed seeing you guys around, and hopefully that, that's all coming to an end. So I want to thank you for all that past support, but also thank you for including us, Mayor Camp, in, in this year's budget recommendations. This hasn't been an easy time for anybody, hasn't been an easy time for cities anywhere, and, and we've had really hard conversations with some of the cities we're in about, about where we fall on the priority scheme when, when everybody's hurting for dollars. And so it just means the world to us that, that we stay high on the priority list. I'm gonna cry for, for Murray City. It just, it really means a great deal. So we, I did pass out a little document there, and it's called an impact report, and it really looks backwards to twenty twenty, and that's calendar year twenty twenty. I, I'll let you peruse that at your leisure, but I couldn't be more proud of what our Murray Boys and Girls Club did throughout this pandemic. It was Murray, as I'm sure you all know, where the first word of the first case of COVID happened in the school district here, and we all got word really quickly and, you know, obviously didn't know what to do in the morning on a school day and what was gonna happen next, and what were we supposed to do with the kids? What do we do with our staff? And, and there was just a great deal of fear, but man, our, our Murray team just rallied from, from day one and, and just did whatever it took. We quickly moved into becoming an emergency care center at the Murray location for parents of essential workers. We had to pay basically hazard pay to staff to, to ask them to come in and put theirs, themselves at risk to provide that service, and we did that for about eight weeks or ten weeks last spring. We were able to open in a really awkward, limited way. You know, the Boys and Girls Club is a very high-touch location, and if you can't play with Legos and you can't touch a basketball and you can't be in groups and you can't ride on a van together, it's hard to program a full and active and engaging program for kids. But our staff just did a crazy good job doing what they could for the kids that we did have in person, and then just being, I, I, I wish I could show you some of the virtual programming that we did, trying to reach out and find our families, find out what our kids were experiencing, and then trying to engage them on Zoom or crazy platforms I've never even heard of. Zoom wasn't even a thing at, in the beginning stages, and to try, to try to get kids keeping active and, and trying to keep them engaged at all with their peers and, and in discussions with positive adults outside of their homes. And for some of our kids, unfortunately, home isn't the finest place to be during out-of-school time hours anyway, and when you're there for a long, long time, we just saw real emotional distress with very stressed families, and that cascades to very stressed kids. So our team just did a remarkable, remarkable job, and then, of course, we were able to open a little bit for limited programming in the fall. So I really want to talk more about what we're looking forward to here in the future. Our fiscal year starts July one, and what I'm sure you've heard over and over again of what a lot of the challenges we're experiencing. Of course, we have this beautiful, bigger club, a lot of it new, that has been not used to its capacity yet. We were getting there, and then everything shut down. And so our staff, we started staff training today, and they're all over in the gymnasium over there, getting stoked up and excited to run pretty close to a normal summer camp experience for our kids. Obviously, all the kids aren't vaccinated yet, so we still have a fair amount of safety protocol and, and cleaning and things like that to make sure everybody stays really safe. But we are really looking forward to getting our kids outdoors, interacting with one another, and doing the normal summer camp things. But more importantly, we have a huge opportunity with our kids, you know, that club is open thirteen hours a day in the summer, to help remediate what they missed in school, and they did miss. Bless the districts and the schools for doing the best they could to provide online learning for kids, but in some households, it just didn't work, and for teenagers, they just opted out in a lot of cases. And so we have kids that have fallen behind, and in many cases, particularly the older kids, they have kind of just, they gave up on school. They felt like school gave up on them, and they decided maybe they didn't need to graduate from high school, and we are struggling to get kids back into the, into the groove with that. In order to do that and to get all the kids back into the club that we want, we have planned to add nine staff to the Murray Club in this upcoming summer camp and into the next school year. The club already had twenty-five, twenty-six staff members, by far and away our largest employment base as a, as a Boys and Girls Club network, and that would be up to thirty-five, thirty-six staff members. Of those, there are eleven full-time people. That means our program director, their program-level managers, and some other full-time folks that are support staff, but the vast majority of those, twenty-four, twenty-five of them are what we call youth development professionals, those part-time, out-of-school time folks that come in, in the after-school hours and then extend their hours full-time in the summer. So we're looking to add a fair number of those. We need to do that in order to get back to our capacity, which is right now with that staffing level is about four hundred and twenty kids a day. As of this morning, we've registered three hundred and eighty-two for this summer camp program. So I suspect by Friday we'll be at capacity, and then the waiting list starts, and you guys have heard me say this, there's, it doesn't matter how many rooms we build over there, this club has a waiting list. It's very popular, and the more cool the club gets, the more kids want to come and the more, more they want to stay every day. So the other challenge with that is that not only do we need to bring these kids in, but we need to make sure that they're at a safe ratio and staying around one to nineteen, one to twenty per staff member, allowing for illnesses for staff and, and people that are gonna be out for a while, and even letting go to lunch, which is, is a challenge in and of itself when you're, when you're open that long. We are having a heck of a time hiring, and I know you've heard this from everybody, and we have increased our starting wage several times since last March, and we are now averaging over a dollar twenty-five more an hour to start as we were pre-pandemic. So when you put that across twenty-five people that, you know, were part-time in the school year or whatever, it's tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. The budget for the Murray Club had traditionally kind of hovered between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred thousand a year, and it is close to one point one million dollars to run that club this year. The big jump in that is staffing because of those higher wages, but we're also anticipating wanting to let our, those youth development professionals work a few more hours a week during the school year, because we're gonna be expecting them to really do academic remediation, one-on-one tutoring, STEM programming, and, and more intensive academics than we've asked them to do, and that means more planning time for them. So we're hoping to add one hour, four hours a week to their time. So instead of twenty-five hours a week, they might work twenty, twenty-nine hours a week so that they have time to plan and to be prepared to deliver this higher-level sort of academic support to our kids. So that's what we're hoping to do. We really want to make sure that our, that, like I said, we take advantage of these out-of-school time hours. There's a big onus on our schools to get these kids back together, but the community partners like us that are out there during out-of-school times can be a big part of that. The other thing that we've added to our lineup at the Boys and Girls Club, and it's something we've been wanting to do for years, and IHC, finally, we got a funder to help us pilot an emotional wellness program for our kids. So this has been a dream come true for us, and the timing could not be better. And what that involves is weekly groups with trained therapists that come to the club to meet with certain age groups to teach kids about coping skills and stress management and, and, and taking care of themselves and doing that kind of emotional self-care. But it also involves the ability, when we have kids that are really, really struggling, to get one-on-one actual therapeutic counseling with an outside partner that can come to the club and do it. The biggest barrier we've always had is we can refer kids to Valley Mental Health all day long, but if they aren't insured, if their parents can't drive them there, if their parents aren't willing, they don't get the kind of mental health care that they need, and we can do it right on-site at the Boys and Girls Club. And so we've added a few components. We've added a nutrition specialist over there. We serve so much food. Food isn't our mission, but boy, do we serve a lot of food over there. Breakfast, lunch, snack, every single day to hundreds of kids. So we've got some big plans to make sure we're able to sustain this level of service, and, and we are grateful for Murray City and all your support in helping us make that happen. Questions from you first before I kind of introduce my teammates here.
Okay, we're about out of time. I'm sorry.
Started.
But I'm, I'm wondering, do you have a yearly report, something that has like the staffing document and your budget and those kinds of things? Could you provide that to Jennifer?
Just like more detail about our, the budget for that club and our staffing and things like that? Sure. So I kind of thought that little impact report was a synopsis of that, but let me do one for the forward-looking year. Our budget hasn't been approved yet, but I can get you what we've got in the works for that, certainly.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, that'd be great.
Awesome. And I just want to say, welcome to Amanda Hughes. She's not a stranger to Boys and Girls Club, but she and I will be transitioning here over the next month.
So when do you leave, Leanne?
The end of June.
Oh, we're gonna miss you. My goodness.
Thank you. Amanda's been with me since the middle of April. So we've been holding hands and sharing an office for a while. But I'll let her tell you a little bit about where her experience.
Thank you. I'll be really mindful of time. Yeah, I've been privileged to work with Leanne and Bob for the last, since 2010, really with Boys and Girls Clubs. Was part of our fundraising and management team there. Two years ago, I took a little break from our local clubs and went on to Boys and Girls Clubs of America, working with our national organization to serve clubs in the Pacific region, both in Colorado, New Mexico, Montana, Utah, Idaho, California, Oregon, and Washington, and had the opportunity to really see what's going on and help clubs strategize their organizational development and all of that. And when Leanne mentioned she was retiring, I was just like, oh, no, because she's built so much. She and Bob have really done so much for the kids in here. And I was like, who will ever fill their shoes and stand on their feet? And little did I know, it would be me. But I'm honored to be able to do that and feel so supported by Bob and Leanne and know that we'll continue building on that legacy. I've had the privilege to be with the Murray Club for some time. I think Mayor Camp and I even pulled some weeds and stuff out there a few years ago with a Comcast Cares Day. So I all echo Leanne's sentiment and feeling supported from Murray and really have taken Murray Club as an example out to the Pacific region of going, look at the great work that they're doing in Murray. Look at the great partnerships that they have building. Look at the great, you know, community partnerships and ownership that they have and have used that as an example for other clubs. So I'm happy to be here and look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Okay, thank you. Bob, what do you have to say?
Thank you.
Just a minute, though.
Every time I come up here, I always think, oh, no. But just on the time. But I really am excited that Amanda's taking over. Just really quickly on that first, when she left two years ago to take her new job, I thought, no, when Leanne leaves in 10 years, you'll be the perfect person to take over this. And I didn't know it would be two years later, but she really is. You'll love working with her. She's fantastic. And I want to thank you guys for the support. I've been involved with the club now 43 years. And before that, five years at Riverview Junior High. So close to 50 years and just love it. And this program, the club works. And just, I was at the club three weeks ago. It's so nice to go back into the club. I hadn't been there for a year. And I was talking to some teens and one girl I had known since she was three years old. And she graduated from Murray High School just last week. And we have our staff with her that were there supporting her. And she was, like you probably know, she was the state Youth of the Year this year, Shanti. And just amazing kids. And I was thinking, we also have a young man named, just how this program works and your support over the years, I can't tell you how many kids it has impacted positively. And there's a young one named Dustin that lives behind Longview Elementary. I don't know Dustin. And he's had some physical challenges. He was a club member for 10 years. And on my computer before I came over, you get the web, the pictures, and his picture was on there to Thanksgiving dinner with his mom. And I was just thinking, wow, I want to keep in touch with her. And just the success, these kids who really don't have anything, but have been able to build really productive lives. And it goes back, I'm to you and council. And I just want to thank you so much and the community. And thanks, Leanne, for letting me volunteer. It's been two and a half years since I've officially retired. And they let me come around and do fun things. So, but thank you very much. Just really appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
No, just big thanks for all you guys do for that program. Great program.
You make us proud. So thank you. Okay. Now we will continue on with reports from city representatives on inter-local boards and commissions. And we'll start with Russ Kakala with Trans Jordan. Russ, are you there?
Hi, I am. And thank you. I'll try to make it short because it's a little long. So last time I reported, it was basically on a transfer station, or it was at Sandy's Transfer Station. And now we're moving in, we've got an RFP out for engineering and design of the transfer station. We sent it out with like three known firms that that's what they do. And we'll see if we can get any more. So, and we're still forecasted for opening in 2024. So, and then I'll change the face of garbage for Murray when that actually happens. So it's kind of exciting to finally get to that point, knowing that, you know, in 12 to 10 to 12 years, Trans Jordan out there will be a transfer station itself and not Atlanta. So that's the plan. So, hang on, I had to turn on my video if it's working. So, and if it's not, sorry. As far as the budget goes, we received the proposed budget in April. And we're planning to do final approval in June, this next week, this, in a couple of weeks. So, and everything looks good there. They proposed a 1.5 COLA and 3.5 merit. And there's a 5% health insurance increase for this next coming year. So, and then we're going to go up another $2, which you guys should be aware of that, which will be $20 a ton and 35 commercial. We've got to do that for the next seven years just to meet our short and long-term needs out there. And that's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions for us?
Thanks. All right. Well, thank you.
Can't wait to see you in person. That would be awesome.
I tried. Sorry. I was trying to turn it on, but I don't know what the deal was. But so next time.
Well, it's good to hear from you. You take care of us.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, Mayor Camp, do you have anything on the COG?
Just briefly.
Council of Governments.
Yeah, just briefly, there was a meeting on January 21, in which the COG filled some vacancies in committees and elected a new chair, Kristi Oberson, Mayor of Taylorsville, as Chair, and Dirk Burton is Vice Chair from West Jordan. They had a presentation from Cameron Deal from the League of Cities and Towns in preparation for the legislative session that was upcoming. And then Carlton Christiansen and Laura Hanson presented updates to the five-year plan for UTA. So that was, that was pretty much the COG meeting for January. And then the next scheduled COG meeting, well, the next meeting was May 20. And due to some kind of a scheduling snafu of some sort, we didn't make that, we didn't get that on our calendar. So I wasn't in attendance to that. But I can tell you what happened there from the agenda. And that was, they had a presentation from Seven Greenways Visioning, which this council just recently had. There was a discussion on homeless shelters and resources from Dan Dugan from Salt Lake City. And then there was a presentation on the amendments to the 2019 to 2050 regional transportation plan from Wasatch Front Regional Council. So that was the discussions from COG. COG only meets three times a year.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Nope. Okay. Central Valley Water, Mayor Camp?
Now, Central Valley, there's, there's a lot going on there. I could, I could spend hours on Central Valley.
You have five minutes.
For you all. Okay. So I wanted to just to kind of take some highlights of what's going on. Like I say, there's, there's a lot going on with the rebuild over there. So I made just about five bullet points. And the first one I wanted to bring out is I just want to reiterate to this council that Central Valley is a very, very well-run organization. The management team is very confident and competent and experienced. And the board has a lot of confidence in our general manager, Phil Heck. I refer to him as Dr. Heck, but that sounds like a, that sounds like a character out of some kind of a Marvel movie or something. But he has repeatedly demonstrated his ability to, to lead that organization and save a lot of money. And he's, he's very, very, he's very professional and very competent. There's also an entity managers meeting that's held every month. So we get direct input on the technical level from our city. And that's attended by Danny Astle and Ben Ford. So we have, we have direct input for the technical expertise. The second point I wanted to bring up is we just finished a $150 million bond transaction that was just completed just a couple of weeks ago. So financing is now in place. That coupled with the $75 million state loan, that was about 75 million. Coupled with those, the plan is, was that we would have enough money to complete the rebuild. That's still the plan. However, there are still two phases of the rebuild that have not been bid yet. So we don't know what, obviously, what construction costs are going to do over the next while. But, but we, we did get a very favorable bond, bond rating is double A. And of course, those of you that know Justin Zollinger know how tenacious he is. Again, a lot of confidence in Justin's ability. And he has been, he's worked very hard and has been very tenacious in assuring that Central Valley has utilized the most appropriate and most advantageous bond product. And he did a lot of shopping around. We were able to secure 1.99% financing on the 2021 B series that matures in 2041, and 2.4% on the 2021 C, which matured in 2047. And of course, the state loan was at 1.2%. So the financing was very good. Now we're just crossing our fingers on whether or not, on what the bids will look like coming in for the last, the last two parts of the rebuild. Which is the third point I wanted to talk about a little bit, is the reconstruction of the facility is moving ahead in spite of the construction environment that we're in. The contractor, because of the amount of concrete they use, they're able to get, they're a high priority customer, and they're able to get concrete a little bit easier than, than we are as a city, for example. But because he's a priority customer. But, but things have slowed just, just a little bit as far as, as getting the construction materials. But all in all, it's going pretty well. The contractor there has been doing similar to what Leighton has been doing for us, and that is they had stockpiled, they saw this coming, stockpiled some of the building materials that they needed for the project. So they looked out for us that way. Number four point I want to bring up is, is that Central Valley, like any other public entity, is charged with doing a vulnerability assessment. So Central Valley requested that the Cyber and Infrastructure Security Agency, which is an agency of the federal government that works to defend against cybersecurity threats, invited them to come out. They spent a full day out there a week before last. And we'll be looking forward to receiving their report when it becomes available on the, on any vulnerabilities they find. And we, we've had several of these, not from necessarily from this agency, but we've had, but through risk and through insurance, we've had, we've been looking at areas where there's risks. And so that, which is a good thing, we'll make sure that that's tightened up, that we don't have those security issues. The flow meter report, you may have remembered that the last time I reported on Central Valley, I mentioned that we replaced the, Central Valley had replaced all of the flow meters from the, all the entities with newer technology. Just an update on that. Our current meters seem to be, they're, they're showing a little bit less flow than, than what the, the old ones did. That's good news for us. That's bad news for some of the other entities that are going to be paying a little bit more. We'll be actually be paying a little bit less because the flow going in is a little bit less based on the new meters. However, we, when I say we'll be paying a little bit less, obviously, we have rate increases already approved going forward. And we are currently in the process with Zion's Bank of doing another rate evaluation, looking at, moving forward. Obviously, we have to cover the tremendous costs of building and rebuilding that facility. So that will be coming to the council before too long. It's in the process right now of being done. So the results of that will come to the council in a committee of the whole, in the future. And then finally, I wanted to, if I can share the screen, I want to share a video. I'm not sure that worked. Let me look here. Are you seeing it back there? Do I have permission to share? Oh, okay. I'm used to using two screens. So this is using just one tonight. Okay, share screen. Okay. I think we're there. There we are. Okay. So I want to show you just some, some drone footage here. This has been edited down, so it's not very long. But you can see what's going on down there as far as the, and keep in mind that, keep in mind that this is a fully operational plant that's, that's, that's being rebuilt while it's operational. But this first, this first footage is the 3W improvements projects. And what that is, is that's the, that's the reuse water filtration system, which includes a new filtering building, new rotating filter disc and a sodium hypochlorite, hypochlorite feed. And also the old, or I should say, the existing UV disinfection system will be put into that as well. And that's, that's to reuse the water so that we can, and we'll actually be in a position where we'll be able to sell, if we have excess reclaimed water for irrigation. But most of this water is currently being used by Central Valley. Okay, the next is the blower building project. The blower building or the blower project injects air into, into the product, for lack of a better term. It keeps water moving and keeps it oxygenated and helps break down bacteria. So throughout the entire process, air is being injected. And this, this is a new blower building that's being built. The next one is the BNR basin, which will come up here in just a second. This is the biological nutrient removal, which removes the phosphorus and the nitrogen from the wastewater. And this is to bring the plan in partial compliance with the 2014 Utah Division of Water Quality Rule that I know you've, you can remember Jim Brass talking a lot about that, the cost that it's going to take to meet that. Whoops, I meant to pause that. I wanted to pause that for just a second because this will bring us into partial compliance with that rule, which originally we was, we were supposed to come into compliance by 2020. We received variants to go to 2025. But we will also need to add a new side stream project, which is one of the two projects that I just mentioned that we still need to bid out. So in order to get us down to where the state is requiring us to have those nutrients removed. And then the, the next one is the recovery replacement project for digesters three and four. Now these, what's really makes this impressive is that these lids weigh somewhere in the neighborhood of 180 tons. And in fact, that crane is so heavy that it couldn't drive from one to the other. They had to partially dismantle it and move it over to the other one to, to lift those in. So that's, that's actually pretty impressive. to lift those in. So that, that's, that's actually pretty impressive. Uh, so this is, uh, this is a rebuild of these, uh, digester covers. And, um, I will know, you may or may not have noticed that there's a lot of stainless steel being built in, in these, uh, uh, in, in the plant this time because not only are, are we having to, uh, to do these new projects, um, but we're also replacing. There we go. We're also replacing, um, components of the plant that's just worn out and rusted out. So we're doing all this at the same time. So anyway, that is, uh, that is Central Valley in a, in a nutshell. Any questions?
That's the fastest I've ever seen those workers, man. They were just buzzing. I'll tell you, that takes a lot of faith to, to have that thing over your head. I'm over there going like, that was big. That was huge. I don't know if I can do that.
All right, Mayor Kemp, you have the next one, Utopia.
Utopia. I'll be shorter than five minutes to make up for what I just went over.
All right. That was interesting though. Thank you.
Okay, Utopia continues to, uh, to, to grow mostly because of the support, uh, of the UIA, uh, uh, its role in providing the network for UIA, the, uh, the increasing customers. And Brenda will talk about the UIA, uh, financials in, in just a minute after I finish this report, but, uh, Murray's buildout is continuing at a rapid pace. Uh, the published buildout schedule is by the end of 2022. So, uh, the end of this year, um, uh, most of the city will be done with the exception of there's some pockets, uh, right over here in the older part of, of the city. Uh, there's some areas down in District Two between Seventh West and I-15. And, um, and some areas on the east side that are scheduled to be done in 2022. And then at the end of, by, by the end of 2022, uh, Murray should be built out. So that's, that's the, uh, that's the current goal there. I wanted to let you know that the, uh, the board approved the addition of a chief technology officer to the, uh, to the staff at Utopia. It's actually a reinstatement of a former position that's been unfilled since about 2014. It was actually held by Roger, uh, Timmerman before he quit and, and left and then came back as the, uh, um, as the general manager. Uh, so that position has now been filled. It's been filled by, um, Aaron Leach, who was the chief op, operating officer there at, uh, Utopia. And, uh, a fellow by the name of Jeff Irwin was hired as the chief operating officer. And, um, on May 13th, uh, Utopia Board ratified these two appointments. So, um, it's, it's good news that, uh, there's so much going on that they need these, uh, this position again to keep up with the technology. So, um, that's really all I had noted for Utopia. Like I said, Brenda will talk about UIA. Any questions?
Just a comment. We're finally getting utopied by, in my area. Yay. I can't believe it. All of a sudden. It's so strange. So that was good news.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, UIA, Brenda?
So, uh, UIA is, um, humming along. They've been averaging, um, anywhere between 900 and 1,000 new customers a month. Um, some of that is due to new build. Some of that is just demand within. Um, they currently have over 35,000 subscribers, so it's growing. Um, we did, um, approve a partnership with Pleasant Grove City. They're going to build out Pleasant Grove City. Um, they will backstop the bonds that UIA will take. Um, it's a really good thing because they have the same access to the internet as, um, Linden does, the same providers. Linden has a take rate of 57%. So over half of the people that their system runs by, they take it. So, um, Pleasant Grove should do the exact same thing. Except for Pleasant Grove that already had the backbone put in because UIA has schools that they've been servicing. So it will be a very quick build and we'll start seeing some revenues coming in from that very quickly. So that will be good. And we, every time they take on one of these projects, we say, is this going to hold up the buildout for Murray or other places? And they say no. It, they can do them both at the same time. So, um, I think where they're down to in a lot of places in Murray is getting access to cross other people's right of ways. And that can take a long time. So, um, but the neighborhood should start coming back in. Uh, there are other cities who are asking if they can contract with Utopia to, to provide their internet services. So, um, and that's about it for UIA. They're, they're doing well. Of course they have a huge debt load and my hope is they keep adding cities. The more profit they make, the more likely it is that our portion of what we have to pay on the old bonds will go down and they will start being able to.
That would be nice.
To at least stop it from going up. That's my, I'll start there. And they provide a great service. So, um, I don't know. The mayor's been threatening to, to go with Utopia for a while. I don't know if he has or not, but I love my service. Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Doug? You have anything on VEC? Valley Emergency Communications Center?
All right. So for those that are watching and may not know what Valley Emergency Communications Center is, that's the 911 call center. Um, and I represent the city on that board. I have, uh, well, let me just get a little, a little, little background on VEC. So, uh, VEC is the call center for 10 police agencies and eight fire agencies. And of course Murray has both of those. Um, there are three highlights that I just wanted to touch on. The first one is the budget, which, uh, like you, the board for VEC, uh, has been working on. Um, and, uh, part of that budget process this year, uh, included looking at the assessments that the cities and agencies pay to help fund VEC. And, uh, as you probably noticed in the mayor's budget, uh, Murray was impacted, all, well, all cities were impacted, but Murray was impacted, um, for both police and fire. The budget assessment for police went up, uh, 16.5% for, uh, again, for police, that, that was almost, uh, about $80,000 a year. And then for fire, it was much less. It went up about 3.3%. And so, um, again, that's in the mayor's budget and will be our assessment for next year. Um, the second item I wanted to mention is that Taylorsville, you've probably read, recently created their own police department. So starting on July 1st, they will be the 11th police agency that will be, um, part of the, uh, VEC call center and VEC will dispatch for the Taylorville, Taylorsville Police Department. Um, and then the last item I wanted to touch on, and I'm going to share my screen for this, um, has to do with the audit that was conducted by, uh, the Utah State Legislature last year in 2020. I've mentioned this in the past. Um, they, they, they audited all the 911 call centers in the state of Utah. Uh, VEC is the largest of all of those call centers, serves the largest population area and the most agencies. And, uh, uh, VEC's per, performance was found to be less than, um, adequate by the audit. And so, um, the, uh, so VEC has been tracking since that time, since October of last year. They've been tracking their performance, uh, mostly to try and show the legislature that they are improving, uh, which they are. So I just wanted to show you some of these statistics that, uh, VEC is tracking. So the first one has to do with the, uh, answering times and, um, there are three standards, if you will, for answering times, uh, calls that are answered within, uh, 15 seconds or less, uh, calls that are answered within 20 seconds or less, and calls that are answered within 60 seconds or less. Um, obviously the desired goal that everybody would like to see is that 90% of all calls are answered, um, within 15 seconds or less. And you can see from this chart what VEC's performance was back in October. Only 71% of the calls uh, were answered within 15 seconds. But if you look at April of 2021, which is the most recent data that they have, um, they're at 83.71%. So, uh, they're not at 90%, but they're making progress, uh, over the last eight months on calls that are answered. And the same is true for those calls that are being answered in 20 seconds or less and those within 60 seconds. You can see the, the, uh, progress that they're making there. The second one, um, has to do with calls that are transferred to other agencies. So the, the goal or the ideal scenario is that less than 2% of the calls that VEC takes would be transferred to another agency. Um, you can see back in October that, uh, they were transferring little over 9% of their calls. And in April, um, they're making some progress. They're still transferring about 8.23% of their calls. So, um, it's not below 2% and there's still some room to go there. Part of the challenge with that is, is that VEC, um, also dispatches, uh, or, or works with Salt Lake City in the valley, which has their own dispatch center for Salt Lake City and Sandy. And then the Utah Highway Patrol also has their own system. And since we're all in the valley, a lot of people, what they'll do is they don't know who to call, right? Well, they call 911, but they end up at VEC. And then VEC has to transfer those calls to Salt Lake City and Utah Highway Patrol. And the plan for VEC is by, is to solve this problem is to get everybody on the same software. And that is well underway. Um, most of the, uh, Salt Lake City, uh, as well as, uh, VEC are now on the same software system. And they're hoping to get Utah, Utah Highway Patrol to join in on that system. So hopefully that will reduce the number of calls that have to be transferred. And then finally, um, there's what they call abandoned calls. And these are calls that people make and that didn't get answered. And so they just hang up or abandon them. And they're trying to reduce that to less than 11% of those type of calls. And, uh, VEC has moved from 23% down to 13%. So they're making good progress on abandoned calls. Um, I will mention that the legislature is still unimpressed apparently by, uh, by these figures and are, um, in, in, in a recent meeting that the staff held with, uh, some of the legislators that are pushing this, um, there was some, I guess, threat, if you were, I don't, that maybe that's too strong of a word, uh, by the legislators that if VEC doesn't get their act together soon, that they're going to have to take it into their own hands. So I don't know what that means, but we'll see what, what comes of that. Hopefully VEC can get, um, get these goals met quickly so that, you know, the, the legislature's not concerned. And of course, legislature's representing the citizens, and I think we can all appreciate if we had to call 911 ourselves and nobody answered the call in a, in a timely manner, that we would also have the same concerns. So that's my report on VEC. Any questions?
Just seems like they've had challenges forever. So hopefully they're getting their act together.
Well, I think they are. I mean, a year ago, a year and a half ago, they hired a new executive director. He's had years of experience with 911 call centers in other states. And, uh, I think he's made, uh, tremendous improvement within the organization. And, um, I think they'll get there.
Good. That'd be great. How about Metro Fire Agency?
All right. Metro Fire Agency, um, is again, uh, it's a group of eight fire agencies in Salt Lake County, um, primarily those that do not belong to UFA, uh, that meet. Um, I don't really have anything to report there. We've, uh, been looking at the bylaws and updating the bylaws, uh, over the last two meetings. And, um, we are changing our meetings from every other month to quarterly just because there's not a lot of issues out there for us to meet on. And so I don't have anything to report on Metro Fire.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
All right, Jennifer, do we have announcements?
Um, no, we don't. Just other than there's turkey rollups and chips in the office for our break between meetings.
All right. Great. Thank you. We are adjourned.